Who do we have on the Zoom?
No one yet.
Nope, okay. All right, I want to welcome you to the December 7th, 2020 Johnson County Council Regular Meeting. First item on the agenda will be roll call.
Josh McCarty?
Here.
Josh Turner?
Here.
Pete Ketchum?
Here.
Rob Henderson?
Here.
Jonathan Myers?
Here.
Jim Eisen? Is absent currently, and John Myers is absent currently.
All right, if you would, if you'd join me for the invocation. Father God, we thank you for this evening, we thank you for the business that we're here to do for taxpayers of Johnson County. We ask that you were with all those who are sick and ill tonight and just going through this COVID situation, that you would be with them, that you would heal their bodies, that you would strengthen them. Guide us and lead us in your path. In your son's name we pray. Amen. Please rise and join me for the pledge.
In the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have a few additions to the tonight's agenda. Under Unified Probation on number four, we're gonna add a 4-1 and a 4-2. And you should have copies of those that Amy's in front of you. And then also, we're gonna add a 7A and a 7B for the Highway Department and Luke. And I believe those are the only additions.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda with those additions.
Second. Motion by Rob, seconded by Josh Turner. All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item will be public comments. I think we have a lot of regulars, so no, no look here.
Actually, I have a public comment. This being the last meeting for Josh Turner and Josh McCarty, and why I'm standing, I don't know. It just kinda happened, so we have these files for each of them. And they indicate Johnson County Councilman Josh McCarty and Josh Turner with deep appreciation for your unwavering commitment and enduring dedicated service to the citizens of Johnson County. And then of course here for Josh McCarty has got an eight-year stint and then this most recent four-year stint. Thank you so much. And Josh Turner for these last four years. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it very much. Thank you all for that. I greatly enjoyed it, enjoyed my time, and enjoyed, enjoy serving and getting to know all of you, and it's been a great joy.
And Santa Claus has given you back your Monday nights.
Yes, exactly. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pete. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, so no further public comments, right? All right, next item on the agenda will be the Routine Matters and the Consent Agenda. If anybody has anything they would like to pull off of there and talk further about, we can. If not, we'll take those all as one.
I'll first give a little credos to Amy for the minutes. I know the budget hearings are always very tough, but looking through those, nice, nice work, Amy, on that. And with that, I motion to accept the Routine Matters Consent Agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, next item will be Emergency Management.
Good evening. Stephanie Seaston, Emergency Management Director. I'm in front of you to give additional appropriations in these line items. It's the CARES Act money that the State Board of the Counties changed halfway in October, that we could not put it in a fund. The CARES Act fund, which we had been doing, we had to put it in general fund and had to be paid out of a separate account, which is coming out of my account. My Emergency Management. So all of this is everything we've already paid or what we still have pending on contract.
And we're just getting reimbursed with the dollars?
Yes. Yes, it's all, we've gotten all of the CARES Act money that Johnson County was allotted. Amy and I worked, Amy got payroll, because we had to send payroll in to get the remaining money, so we have received all of our five, over $5 million.
Mr. Eisen has joined us via Zoom. Welcome. Any further discussion or event?
Nice work. Motion as presented.
Second. Motion by Rob Henderson, seconded by Josh Turner. Any further discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye? Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item will be Health Department.
Good evening. Betsy Swearingen, Director of Johnson County Health Department. I'm here tonight for, I guess, two reasons. The first is to add a new physician to the Health Department as an IT technician. I've discussed this with Chris and Commissioner Baird. Being that we're off-site and we are monopolizing, for lack of a better word, the IT people here in the office due to the clinics, and then us being off-site and having our own server at the Health Department. I had asked possibly to have somebody from the IT department, this has been months ago, housed within us, and it didn't work at the time. But we've kind of taken Bob Langoff from his normal job duties and have him out at our testing site almost on a daily basis. So in talking with Chris and Commissioner Baird, they asked me to approach you guys to have an IT position within the Health Department. I can fund that next year, but I would need to move money from my overtime line item for the remainder of his salary, starting Thursday. He would then become a member of the Health Department, if you so approve.
So I'm gonna ask a question. Is this reimbursable?
Do you mark on this point?
This position, basically how I plan to fund it is, I have a health educator position that is open for next year. So I, at the beginning of the year, will come to you and ask to move the salary from the health educator position into the IT position.
But it's a function of the virus?
It is a function of the virus, and yeah, moving forward, like the money that Stephanie, almost all of our...
Is that correct? Salary? Would you say? From the Health Department is being, is being reimbursed?
Yeah, as much as we can get reimbursed, it will be reimbursed, and then therefore, next year, anything that we can reimburse from him working out at the testing site will be reimbursed.
Okay, second. I see.
What are your, what are your plans for after next year, '22, '23, and so on?
I will probably approach you for additional appropriations to, to fall into that position. We need it, we're, I mean...
Have you always needed it?
We've always, we've always needed it, and we've just kind of gotten by as best as possible. And I've had my inspectors, one created the webpage, and one updates this, and it is, we're, we're swamped right now. And if, if we could have someone solely dedicated to our IT needs, it would be greatly appreciated. And the courts have their own IT person, and the Sheriff's Department has their own IT person. And so Commissioner Baird thought it would be prudent at this point to, to approach you and ask for it.
Could this person be a floater?
A floater within my, within my office? Oh yeah, they're gonna do a lot, so. Whenever we can, we'll have them, and we'll cross-train them as much as possible to, to fill in when needed. That's kind of how the Health Department works, except for our nurses, who are, you know, solely dedicated. They, you know, they do other things besides nursing, but obviously, they can only give immunizations, but everybody else pretty much knows how to. And we try to train everybody so that they can fill spots when needed.
Can I ask Chris?
Is your mic on, John?
Yeah, is your mic on? Sorry. There you go.
Could you comment? Love this. I mean, are there, are there gonna be shared equipments and responsibilities?
Christopher Williams, IT GIS Administrator. I don't think I understand what you mean by shared equipment.
Well, this person's gonna be working with all of the Health Department's equipment. Is there gonna be any cross-referencing, or is it just, this gonna be totally separate from everything that the county does?
Well, it will be contained within the Health Department. Their technology needs have grown beyond what their own staff is capable of.
My question is, I guess, does it fall underneath the county somewhere, I mean, the county's IT department?
Do you mean oversight, or? He would, I guess he would answer to Betsy. He would be an employee of the Health Department.
We, the Health Department provides, I would, almost 100% of our equipment. Yeah, we buy all of our tech, we buy all of our, we, we purchase the server, we buy everything that we have housed at the Health Department. And as he would become a direct employee of the Johnson County Health Department, we're all Johnson County government employees, but it would be under the Health Department's.
Is this a lateral salary?
Yes.
Okay. And then would you have just paid overtime for this individual based on workload, or?
I would, I would assume, as with the rest of my staff right now, that there will be overtime.
How are you positioned to handle that financially? Specifically for this individual than just global?
We, we have enough remaining for ne, for this year, and we, we kind of built in for next year's overtime. We kind of anticipated those needs.
Okay, great. So unfair question to you, but as this person goes from IT to health, will, will there be a void in IT that needs to be backfilled? I rationalize in two different ways, if I had it, and so I thought I'd just ask the question.
Yes.
Sorry, best trying to...
That's okay, it's fine. I was trying to be...
Yes, there will be hired a replacement, but I did provision, make provisions for that in Calgary for 2021.
And as it was with some other departments whose employees have moved into our division, if he would need any help whatsoever, we're willing to share him until Chris is able to find somebody to fill that position. We'd be more than happy if Chris would, if Chris would need it or ask for it in any way, shape, or form.
Is there, is there an effective date for, if we were to make a motion, an effective date in this?
No, because they're, they're asking before they do it, they're gonna do it Thursday, so.
Good for you. Most people don't do that.
We tried. Connie, got a lot of her, she does it all.
Well, I want a motion to approve their request to, to create a position and to, to move that individual at the proposed salary. Small motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Henderson, seconded by Josh Turner. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, John Munderley. Just on a side note, we will be opening, in conjunction with Johnson Memorial, we will be opening, opening a vaccination clinic. It should open on Friday, the 18th. We'll be running out of, I believe, JMH's former emergency department. My goal of that is to hopefully piggyback on that, and when we're required as the Health Department to open our own to, to vaccinate the general public, our, our hope is to still run that in that same location, but subject to change. If necessary, we will have some grant funding coming down to staff that clinic.
Is COVID hard again issue?
Yes, it's a huge issue, so that's why it would behoove us to partner with JMH, because they have those provisions. We have, we have provisions for that, but not to the capacity that we need.
Are you permitted to say which vaccine will be offered, which, which manufacturer?
I, I think, I mean, I think, I think it's rolling out Pfizer and then Moderna is right knocking on the door, so.
You know, you know, this is you're gonna get?
I believe we get, we get a first tray of approximately 900-ish. And those will initially go to first-line healthcare providers, long-term cares, and other people that are, have direct patient contact.
Does the best, I was very tired of other updates about this. Does the vaccine require a negative test result prior to administering?
No.
No.
I, no, it will not, so, and it's a dual dose, so we will be working on, we're, you know, the reminder platform to, to get them. It's by, right now, it's, it's actually by invitation and appointment only. And then we hope to get it out to the general public when we finally get approval from the state to do so. We're getting our plans in place. It looks a little different than what we're used to. So we think it looks different. We'll find out on the 18th. We'll see what it's like. It may turn out to be like H1N1, and we got through that, we'll get through this.
Real quick, James Eisen, I had the opportunity to, we'll call it, interact with Betsy and some of her staff over the weekend out at the fairgrounds. And I would just like to publicly thank her for what she's doing. Her staff was wonderful, the wait time was minimal, and they're just doing a phenomenal job, and their spirits were, were very upbeat and professional. And I just want to pass that along, and thank you, Betsy.
You're welcome. We're happy to help, and we'll keep doing it, and as long as they ask us to. So thanks.
I was gonna ask a question.
Yeah.
On going on your website as far as appointments, you're several days out?
Right.
What recommendations are made to the general public when you see that you're several days out on an appointment, but you need it now?
Sure, and, and this is outlined on our, on our website. So we ask that you take the first available appointment, but then you can show up that, that day, or, you know, the next day, or whatever. And we will rearrange the schedule, we'll bump some other things and push some things around, and reschedule you and get you in that exact day.
Is it helpful, we got doctors?
We don't need it. We don't, you don't need it. So just, just take the first available appointment, come and see us as soon as you can, and we'll get you in that day.
Okay, and are you guys still outside?
Yes.
Are there, I've noticed on TV that there are locations throughout the United States that you're driving through, like the Armories and stuff. Is that a possibility to help it better for the workers themselves, a location that has a physical place to drive through a building?
We considered that, but then you have issues with regard to sanitation and cleaning of that facility that has to occur. And it gets to be costly when there really is only enough money to fund it staff-wise. But I will say, if you have a chance to drive by our clinic, God love Connie again, Pam, her and her, her significant other built shacks, guard shacks. So we now have our people that register you, that sit in single-person shacks, that keep them out of the elements and are heated. And have screens and, and roofs and shelves, and for them, to keep them happy and dry and warm. And we've provided other provisions for our, for our swappers to try to keep them out of the elements as best as possible. It's a, it's constantly emerging and constantly changing, and every day, our little shanty town looks different, but, but it's working, so. Okay, I took 90 years of your time. I'm sorry for that. I appreciate it.
All well and good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. I appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda would be Pretrial Diversion Program. Just like $5.
She's a pretty investor, yeah.
Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Myers. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item on the agenda will be Unified Probation.
Hi, Angela Morris, Chief Protection Officer.
So tell us a little bit about your request.
Well, the first one for A, there was a grant that some expenses did not get covered. I'll be real honest with you, this, I inherited that grant. It began, the beginning of 2019, when I started. So the money's here that we have to adjust for, were actually from 2019, but we had them, I was able to find money within our current budget to cover those.
Will you be able to pick this grant back up?
No, I'm not. We applied for it again and did not get chosen for 2020. Like I said, we're, this, we're kind of, I'm operating about a year behind on this one. And it was programming in the juvenile side. It was to offer programming through Reach for Youth for some of the juvenile offenders and their families.
So how, how far down the road does this get you? Just to 1231 of this year?
This will make everything even and done, and that grant will be satisfied and over after this.
The grant has ended, and it was in the red. Some things didn't get approved, so try to zero it out, so she had to find money somewhere else to zero out the grant.
It was for criminal programming?
It was. It was programming that was taking place at Reach for Youth. They're still offering that programming, we're, we are still able to refer to that programming.
Further questions or discussion?
I will motion to approve both transfers as requested.
Motion for Mr. Henderson. We're doing yearly uniting, right? We added one, 4-1.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Is that any? All right, so 4-1 will be office equipment, transfer office equipment into part-time?
I'm going to approve as presented.
Second. Motion by Pete, seconded by Josh Turner. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next will be 4-2, part-time to office supply.
Move to approve. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Myers. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, and thank you both, Josh's for serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
For missing us.
All right, Election Board.
So I'll take this in for Trina. Five and six kind of go together. She paid some claims earlier this year for election services, and then later we found out she can get this grant. So we need to do some claim adjustments, similar to what we did with Stephanie's, to appropriate it. And then this money, a number six, basically, once we get that, we'll go back to general fund, so it's just what he can do, so they, they go together.
All about getting money back in her general fund, so motion to approve five and six.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Nina. All right, next item on the agenda will be Highway Department.
Good evening. Luke Maston, Highway Director. A couple of things on the agenda. One is a transfer in Fund 1173, that's our NVA's restricted fund. Transfer is needed because there's a, this is the last payment on our transportation bond for the White Land Road project. As a part of that bonding program, a portion of the interest is paid through federal dollars, which reduces the amount of interest we have to pay. However, at the time that the payment was due, the bank had not received a federal portion yet. So this is a small transfer to pay the entire amount due on the bond to make it whole. And then when the federal government provides the bank with their portion of the interest, that should come back to us and be deposited in 1173.
I will motion to approve the transfer of $2,543.13 as discussed.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Myers. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And the second item is a request for your approval and execution of financial commitment letters for two project applications we intend to submit in NDOT's current fiscal year 2026 Call for Federal Aid projects. Those two projects coincidentally are on Clark School Road in Clark Township. The first is the short section of Clark School Road between our county road 750 East and the Shelby County line. We actually applied for this project once before, but unfortunately, our application was not selected. The other project is just west of there, and it would be the replacement of our county bridge number 103. This is one of the higher priority bridge replacement projects that the county needs to undertake, based off of our most recent bridge inspection cycle. All of the bridges were inspected in July. At the time that I provided the letters for the council review, we had not finalized our cost estimate for the bridge one of the project. We have finalized that now. The total project cost estimate, which includes engineering design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction, is just over $2 million, $2,38,500. We would be applying for 80% of that cost to be covered with federal funds, and the other 20% would be local funds.
Is that 20% when you could commit that letter?
Correct.
You wanted the other one, real quick?
Oh, sure.
Did you, or do you have numbers yet on that one?
The other one, the numbers were actually, on the letter, we did have those finalized prior to, we needed to send these to you. That total project... That total project cost, and this is a section of Clark School Road between County Road 750 East and the Shelby County line. Total cost estimate for that is just over $3 million, that'd be $3,057,750. Again, that would include engineering design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. And we would be applying for 80% of that amount to be covered, hopefully, for the federal project.
What are your applications due?
Right.
Right.
So we have plenty of time.
Since I'm my senior in high school, I guess. Do it 1159 and I'd add, fine. I would appreciate the description in here, and so I would propose to approve both requests for financial commitment letters, including 20% of the amounts described by them. Second.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does both? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Luke, Luke.
Almost got away.
Yeah, Luke's still up there.
Yes.
Hey, sorry, let me. Jim Eisen, hey, just a quick question. Are we, when are we scheduled to break ground on the Fairview Road and Peterman Road roundabout?
So that project was originally planned for construction this summer. This summer, excuse me, I guess that'd be next summer, 2021. However, there is a shortage of federal funding from the program that is funding 80% of that construction. Those would be the funds that are allocated by the Indianapolis MPO that potentially could move the construction of that project back to the next fiscal year, which would be July of next year, 2021, through June of the following year, 2022. So we've had some preliminary conversations to see if there's a way that we can somehow move the construction of that project, have that project left by NDOT in a timeframe that would allow us to build it, hopefully, next summer, or at worst, have construction done in the fall. So next calendar year for sure. Our original plan of next summer, unfortunately, is not going to work out.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Luke. Other business is the approval of Revolution, uh, Revolution 2020-04, which is the transfer of funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund in the amount of $3.5 million. And Sheena.
Sheena Johnson, County Attorney. If you have any questions. This is the amount that was recommended by Mike Groder, your financial advisor, and mimics the resolution you did last year, except for the amount which less you to $3 million, that's yours, three and a half.
I see no reason to not to do this. It's consistent with our conversations that have the last few years post-budget. So with that, I motion to approve Resolution 2020-04 as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does both?
Aye.
That is a late aye?
Yeah, I assume that was an aye and not a nay, right? Jim?
Yes, that was an aye.
Okay, we just caught you late, so we're good. All right, old and new business.
While you're still up there.
Yeah, while I'm up here, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant County Attorney, Zach Lang.
Zach.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Very happy to have him on board. He's kind of taken the lead on the bylaws project, so he should be making some progress there. He comes to us from Fort Wayne, worked for the city of Fort Wayne, so he works for us more, you know, how you do. So he does have some experience in the public sector, so very happy to have him on board.
Welcome.
Jack, Jack LaLanne, is that?
Oh, Zach, no.
Zach, I thought you said Jack LaLanne.
Zach Lang.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Also, also, before you go, do you want to talk about December 28?
I'll catch these, because these are the only ones I haven't talked to about it, so I'll get them at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to ask Michelle Graves to, who happens to show up, to talk about collection, the pace, velocity, the collection of property taxes and other items in certain the pan, if you wanted to jump in there, but just curious to see how that's going.
Michelle Anne Graves, Johnson County Treasurer. Spring tax collections are in the books, so we know what they were, I think, what were our numbers, maybe 7% down? I don't remember for sure, kind of caught me off-guard. That's fine, but we're right in the middle of what we call our fall settlement. So we've got lots of big numbers floating around. Last time I checked, we were around $88 million collected to go out in December to our taxing units. Now, how that compares to last year, we haven't had time to check for comparisons. We're all hands on deck, trying to get it ready and get it in on time. We expect to hand it off on December 10th to the auditor's office. So if anyone wants to send me some emails or check back in, or I can send out some global emails to the council, I'll have a better idea of where we're at by Thursday. But I don't see any large anomalies at this time.
Food and beverage, are we seeing food and beverage? Sorry.
Okay, so Innkeepers Tax, I just ran their monthly report today. Innkeepers Tax is still down as compared to last year. They took a pretty hard hit in the first and second quarters. It's trying to come back, but I want to say just knee-jerk reaction. It's still down 7% from where it was last year at this time. And that's October sales, because they always pay a month behind. So October, pay November, Innkeepers is still down from where it was last year. The good news is, is that all 27 merchants are reporting and reporting on time. So we don't have a big problem there. Food and beverage, last month, September, pay October, if I'm not incorrect, we actually surpassed our collections from where it was this time last year. So food and beverage, I think, will end the year right at, or maybe even above where it was.
That's right.
That's in collection. Where it's going to be a bit tricky is our food and beverages tied into that stadium tax. So until the collective group of Donut Counties who are collecting that tax reach the $5 million mark, we're still sending half of our collections to the state. If it takes us longer to get to that amount as a collective group, we may actually be able to keep less in our pocket, even though our collections are in Johnson County.
I am very confident, between you and Ron West, that there will be every I dotted and T crossed and
Yeah, it's our thing.
Point, yeah, so.
We like it.
That's a great update.
Yeah, okay.
I was not expecting that news on food and beverage, not at that level. I thought it'd be a bounce back, but not to be on par or slightly above year over year, so that's great.
I think it's okay that I can say where we've seen the largest increases in the fast food industry.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for taking the impromptu question.
I just love public speaking.
Well, you just got better at it. I would like to update the council real quick on the redevelopment commission. So we have met several times, and Sheena was welcome to jump in, but we have a timeline. We are hustling to adhere to that would create effectively two tip allocation areas, economic development areas, kind of a west-side, east-side concept, mostly here around the I-69 area on the west side, and then on the east side, more around the Franklin, Clark area, Pleasant Clark, Pleasant area, along 65 corridor. So we have, in the process, we've been identifying parcel numbers, and thanks to Chris and GIS and folks for there to help with that. But our timeline is such that December 18th, we hope to have those parcels fully identified, presented to ICE Miller. Then on December 28th, we'll have a special meeting of the redevelopment commission to have adopted declaratory resolutions potentially. So our goal is trying to adhere to this timeline as much as possible, but I haven't reported to you folks in a while about that in part, because we have not done anything in a while, but we're starting to get some steam, so glad to entertain any questions.
How often do you meet?
I would say once a month consistently, or as needed.
Do you ever take minutes?
Yeah, yeah, Sheena, yeah, Sheena's.
Can we get a copy?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll inform you.
Surely you'll tell you. You're a woman. So that's, that's why I want to provide that update.
Do you guys want to advertise for board appointments?
I think we did last year, correct? Did we coincide with commissioners?
I think it was two years ago.
That was two years ago.
Well, we did do the Greenwood EDC, but the regular ones we did not.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't know when the term, I don't know if this is the topic, but I guess I don't know when it turns over.
There's several board appointments that end 1231, that they appoint in January. Sometimes they advertise, sometimes they haven't.
I can remember you guys advertising, you had a bunch of people in here.
Well, we did, well, we have the Greenwood EDC, that was kind of new, that was.
What kind of notice do you need, I mean? Three days, 10 days, what is it? What's the clock?
So your first meeting in January. Be the second Monday. I don't know, I know within a week or two, whether you went to advertisement, it's about a couple weeks to get it done.
Just for me, actually, I would say I'd like to know positions that are open. And if those folks are wanting to reserve, I don't know if it's incumbent on them to respond to the advertisement or for us to reach out to them.
Yeah, commissioners are doing our advertising, so they know. They usually do, I mean, they like to get fresh interest whenever they can, you know.
I know there's like Board of Zoning Appeals, County Park Board, Greenwood EDC, Johnson County EDC. Franklin EDC is the end of January, and then the local EDC, at least those.
I will also tell you that another benefit to requiring advertisements in the forms that we've done in the past is it helps us know that the people that are serving currently are still interested. So we're going to reiterate their interest through the form, so that's all.
I would have, I would have interest in that. I think, yeah, it's good. Wasn't that a question? Jimmy, you out there?
This is Jim Stone.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, are you okay if we advertise for open or upcoming appointments?
Yes, yes, that's fine.
Great, thank you.
All right, anything else? Entertainer motion in here? So who?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.